Okay, a little after six, we'll call the meeting of the Charter Township of Bedford Planning Commission to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. My nation on its own.
Thank you, everybody. Shirley, roll call whenever you're ready.
Trustee Stacy Greenwood. Commissioners Claudia Brown.
Yes.
Barbara Jones. Shirley Togo here. Tony Walters. Absent.
Yes.
Kevin Valison.
Here.
Mike Stab.
Here.
We have six affirmative. Corrin present.
Uh, let the absence report show that Tony did make contact and that is an excused absence. Thank you. Okay, your next item on the agenda is going to be approval of the September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four agenda. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
So Kevin, yep, Kevin and Claudia. Any discussion on this agenda? It's gotta be the shortest one we've ever done. No discussion? All right. Roll call whenever you're ready, please.
Commissioner Barbara Jones. Claudia Brown.
Yes.
Kevin Valison.
Yes.
Stacy Greenwood.
Yes.
Mike Stab.
Yes.
Shirley Togo, yes. Six affirmative. Motion carries.
Excellent. Uh, next item on the agenda is going to be approval of our July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So.
Support. Stacy Greenwood. I know it does. Uh, any discussion on these minutes? I've got just two minor corrections. Up at the top there, uh, under, um, the Pledge of Allegiance, uh, must have just carried over on the template. Uh, we did not actually appoint a temporary secretary there. Ms. Shirley was here.
Yeah, Shirley was here.
Uh, so the friendly amendment to delete that. And then Barb, did you say that there was something else?
Yeah, the date at the bottom for the next meeting was, um, twenty-third. It should be, it should have been the twenty-fourth.
From the amendment to change that, the bio next meeting was supposed to be listed at September twenty-fourth. On both of those?
That was Barb and Stacy.
Any other discussion on those minutes? Okay, roll call, please.
Mike Stab?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia Brown?
Yes.
Shirley Togo, yes. Kevin Valison?
Yes.
Stacy Greenwood?
Yes.
I think six affirmative minutes are accepted with collections.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is our liaison report from trustee Greenwood.
Um, so we had a couple months.
Yeah, it's been sixty days since we've been together.
Uh, the rezon request for North Avenue, if you all remember, um, to move from residential to commercial, was approved by the board. Um, and they also did a read-in of the solar ordinance. And since you guys have been working, all of us have been working on the zoning for marijuana. Um, we also worked in the licensing ordinance. Uh, we have to keep up with ongoing legislation. Most notably, we, um, listened to the residents and decided to strike out future opportunities for outdoor grow. So the planning commission can probably accept, um, some dispensaries. I predict that the Cody who thinks we need, um, grow licenses will just go to the existing public.
Oh, yeah, and there's always still the opportunity for medical time.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, but there are opportunities, uh, for dispensaries, so you likely will be seeing a general.
Uh, could you repeat that first part about grow again, forty? I'm getting quite here now.
So the board, uh, had to take a look at the facilities, um, and how many licenses we wanted. And with the feedback, um, regarding the outdoor grows, particularly the smell, the board had decided to strike future use for an outdoor grow.
Good, okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is our liaison, or excuse me, the zoning report from our zoning administrator Cody. Did you have anything that you wanted to add, uh, with your report?
Not really. I did realize right before this that, well, I kind of forement this, half of the last paragraph got cut off. Uh, I'm noticing a lot of little quality of life things being up there and fixing this on the backend rental or urban livestock for all the certificates we're printing off with the title of rental certificates. Uh, there's certain addresses where you search by the parcel number, it goes for different address, but there's two of those addresses, like really weird stuff. Unfortunately, it's just around trying to fix, uh, more on the backend quality of life thing. Something that was left throughout the day. Um, and then, yeah, other big things, River Road Water Project, uh, there's only four inspections left. They'll finalize all per pulls for that, so, you know, that will be completed on our end.
Excellent. That sounds like good progress there. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, next item is going to be this, uh, discussion of our old business and that's going to be continuation of the public hearing to consider adoption of the new zoning ordinance. Uh, which will regulate development and land use in within township. Do I have a motion to, uh, reopen, continue the public hearing?
Almost nothing.
It's still nice. Okay, before we get started, we will, uh, start with public comment. Is there any public comment on, uh, agenda item only, the only agenda item being the zoning ordinance? Close that public comment at six on. All right, uh, discussion of the hopefully what is the last amendment to our zoning ordinance, right, Kyle?
Um, I'm sure I hope every time, but.
I can't decide if I'm in front or behind you on that, but anyway, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna kind of recap where we are and then we'll get into just, uh, hopefully.
Hello?
Hello, how you doing?
Fine, yourself?
I'm good. Uh, as an audience member and, uh, and, and the supervisor, it would probably be more appropriate if you were in the audience. And not, not up at the table with us.
I was a board thing.
Can't be considered, well, it can be considered influential.
Oh, so that was a board thing.
Uh, no, no, just, just, just planning commissions, no, no problem, but we are happy you're here.
I'd be here too.
Thank you.
Oh, that's, I guess now, okay, nevermind.
Good to see you, Carl. Okay, uh, so we did have the, uh, professional review done, uh, by the attorney's office and, uh, they had two, two things, Seth, or ju- just the one thing on the, the wind energy that you wanted, wanted to discuss?
Right, so on wind energy, it looked like the turbine height was limited to here at twenty-five, twenty-eight feet to the top of the wave. That was the standard, I think some time ago, but that's now it's, uh, it's like six hundred fifty, seven hundred, they're, they're a lot bigger than that.
Oh, wow.
And I think three hundred twenty-eight feet, uh, I, I don't think any developer would consider that here every day, just a registered state under preemption. Um, it's within your discretion of how high you would like to make that. Okay. You probably should be revisited, otherwise I, I don't think it would be a supportable.
Okay, uh, so just so everyone's on the same page, we're looking at page ninety-one in the, the updated zoning draft that you have that was dated August twenty-eighth, which was your packet that we, that we gave you today. Um, it's going to be number two A in the height in the regulations. It does list it at three hundred and twenty-eight feet. Uh, the attorney's office has obviously recommended that we change that to at least six hundred. Um, based upon what they're, what they're seeing. Uh, I did do just a little bit of research on some of the stuff on the east side of the state and that is fairly, fairly, fairly common. Uh, I agree with the assessment of, uh, the attorney's office that three hundred and twenty-eight feet is just not going to fly. I also am not necessarily thinking that Bedford will ever really get a wind application, but in the, in the event that they do, we don't want to start off with something that is just completely, you know, exclusionary, obviously.
Right.
Um, so I would, uh, think that we would just, just change that to six hundred right now while we have this draft open. Uh, is there any discussion on that? Any, any other comments? Kyle, do you have any comments on that?
No, I'm just here, I'm kind of with you. I don't, we don't probably envision winds in this area of South Oak, Michigan, however, wouldn't happen. Um, yeah, Seth is recommending six to seven hundred. What's a hundred feet when you already talk about six hundred? So I mean, you want to preempt it and split it at six fifty? I mean, I don't know, my only thought is if you, could you potentially vary it coming forward behind maybe, so if you just, you could do six fifty?
Yeah, so, okay, so with the preemption.
Right.
The preemption legislation doesn't limit the height. It's going to be up to the FAA and this could be, that's going to vary throughout the state.
Right.
So if, uh, you can do a couple of things. You can set it where you think is appropriate. I told you what we're seeing statewide and then in the meantime, if there's a, if it gets, you know, a recommendation tonight, it's going to go over to county. We can check with county and contact the FAA to see what, what they, what they have the height limitation for this area. Then when it goes to the board, the board can revise that number without having to come back to the, um, plan.
Okay.
If they want.
Okay. I mean, I am thinking this to our proximity to the airport, Battle Creek. Obviously, the smaller of those ports that's in Plano, not that that's close, but I mean, like, there are two small airports that are around. I would think that the limitation is going to be, be less anyway, but I mean, I, I don't know that, so I, I am fine with six hundred. And, you know, if we ever had a variance request for fifty feet, um, so, so be it. But do you have any, huh? Okay. Kevin? Okay, Kyle, if we can change that to six hundred feet in the draft? All right, guys, now let's change number one. I set a limit of eight tonight.
Number one.
We'll do, we'll do as many as we need. Okay, and so Seth, that was the only thing that you guys noticed in your, in your review, correct?
Yeah, your wind ordinance is about twenty pages.
Yeah, it's long.
Yeah, and there were some highlights that we looked for, mostly with the commission is actual cost, I think, and, uh, Katie and I went through it and for where we're at, I, I think it's I think it's fine. I also agree with Kyle where I don't think wind is very practical, uh, for Bedford. It would be absolutely stunted if the application came through.
All right, perfect. All right, so.
Here, I think any other items that Seth commented internally was to modify the mention to special land use, protect your document, make sure that any reference to special land use are carried through.
And that was just a language, language correction, correct?
Yep.
We wanted to make sure that we were consistent with special land use because that is what is consistently being used now as opposed to, you know, twenty years ago when they called it, you know, unconditional use. Correct, Kyle, on that? Okay. And that is, that is something that they're just going to scan the document for and, and take care of that. I think I noticed that like in like two places.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you for that review, Seth. We appreciate that. And Kyle, if we can just make those, those two modifications requested by the attorney's office, that would be great. Um, I am going to just go ahead and I have seven things here. They are all you know, grammatical type like things, so not, not a big deal. I'm just going to go down that list real quick. I have the page number and what the, what the situation is. And we'll go through those and get those taken care of and then we'll go around the table and, uh, ev- every, every individual will have, uh, an opportunity if they have anything else that they'd like to add. Um, or that they've noticed or, or whatever. Does that sound, uh, fairly efficient? Okay, perfect. Uh, the first thing that I noticed was on page number one in one point oh four. Uh, down there on purpose, uh, this was based on the Bedford Township master land use plan. We had talked about changing the wording on that, Kyle. Um, approved by the Board of Trustees and then on this date, um, do we still, obviously, we just need to, to get the date that that was done, or did you guys leave that intentionally blank for a reason?
Do have that blank so we can have confirmation of the date that it was approved about.
Okay, all right. And we're, and, and, and there we're talking about the master plan, correct? All right. So the general thinking was that we were going to strike land use, I believe?
Yes.
And just have master plan and then insert the correct date. So, um, if we can strike those, Kyle, and then I will track down when we actually had the, uh, the final, the final vote of adoption on that for you and then get that to you.
So.
All right, uh, fast forwarding to page eight in our table of permitted uses. Uh, just a few little corrections that we need to make. Um, in this, in cemetery, it's got special land use, uh, under the manufactured housing. I'm pretty sure we were gonna, we, we, we struck that when we, uh, struck it out of the lakefront residential.
Yeah, I remember that.
So.
Yep.
I'm still behind you.
Uh, so on, on cemetery, uh, it, it's got a special, special, special use under the manufactured housing, which were which we, which we struck last time.
Talk about mixed use.
Okay, no. No, no, that's, that's next door. Uh, and then also I just had a clarifying question, uh, moving down to domestic urban livestock. We have that as a permitted use in the R A O S. We also have it as a permitted use in the neighborhood residential. I thought we were.
Urban, the urban livestock ordinance is for residential specifically.
Right, which, which is a permitted. They have to have a permit from, from the township, so, I mean, di- did we want to leave that? I mean, do we leave that as a permitted use even though it is a permit from the township? I guess I wanted to clarify what could be confusing.
If it was placed as special land use, it wouldn't need any public hearing.
Okay, all right, so that's, I just, I remember us talking about that and I couldn't, couldn't, couldn't exactly, uh, remember that, how we came out on that, so we will leave that as it, as it stands.
Well, the R, R A O S is permitted.
Yeah. The domestic livestock.
Wants to get a horse, they have to come get a permit?
Open your heart, they better have five acres first.
Correct. Because we have the domestic livestock ordinance, which has a set of standards.
It's separating agricultural from the residential.
Of course, horse wouldn't be urban livestock, I wouldn't think.
Urban livestock by our, and it says honeybees, miniature goats, uh, chickens.
Rabbit.
Rabbits, chickens. On the clarification.
Okay, perfect. Uh, moving on to page twenty-two. Uh, we just still had a few hyperlinks down there, Kyle, on, uh, B six. I will say that they actually worked when I clicked on, so that was a different situation than normal, but, uh, we just need to take those off of there. Uh, moving on to page forty. Uh, down at the bottom can be, um, F, under application and approval. We're still referencing section fifteen point oh seven. I think that'll need to reference section thirteen now.
If the chair is happy with it, I'll, we'll just modify to say that forth in the action zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And then we striking the conditional and the conditional, I don't know.
Yeah. So right, right in front of that, Kyle, is, is, is one of those examples, that's a great, great example to use there. No, 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 you're good, uh, of what we were talking about when we were changing you know, the, you know, special use, you know, rather than conditional use. So two birds, one stone. Uh, yes, I am okay with that, Kyle. So in, in, uh, earlier on in the marijuana ordinance, you guys actually had used the reference to, you know, the process and procedures. We didn't actually have the section number, but uh, that language will be just fine. Is everybody all right with that? Uh, jumping ahead to page sixty-four. And so this was something that we needed the clarification on. Tony was, unfortunately, she's not here tonight, but, but, you know, the adult motion picture theater, adult live stage performing. Uh, whether or not we wanted to strike that out or if that was going to be considered, um, exclusionary. So I actually, so when we were talking about it, she was thinking like an outdoor movie theater. I don't think, when I read that, that's not what they're talking about. Like, they're talking about like a, you know, a theater where you're going to watch that kind of thing, uh, indoors. Uh, so in, in, in my opinion, we don't need to strike that out. Uh, because that's part of the, you know, sexually oriented businesses that, that would be permitted in the industrial district. I feel like if we were to take that out, that would be, you know, exclusionary to that type of business. So I think we would either say we don't want to have that at all or leave it the way it is.
And I think the initial complaint was that it was grouped in with residential and then.
Correct, and then moved to industrial, so, uh, I just wanted to touch on that real quick. Uh, like I said, unfortunately, she's, she's, she's not here tonight, but, uh, I think that that can be left in with no, with no change. Does anybody have any other comment on that particular issue? If you guys, even, it was late in the meeting when we started talking about that, but she was, I think, specifically thinking of like. You drive by in the car, your kids are going, what's that? There did, yes, yes, many, many moons ago. That's right.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so that was the only thing that I wanted to touch on, on that, so I think that, uh, we're all in agreement. We can just leave that, leave that alone. Uh, jumping to page sixty-seven. Uh, down under the zoning district, uh, Kyle, I see that we still have, uh, agricultural and this is in the, so the large scale solar farms. We have a reference to the agricultural district, which will need to change to the R A O S. And then a reference to, um, the permitting under section three point two-three and then article twelve, so we'll just need to update those with again, what I think is article thirteen. And then.
Your reference to three point two-three, right above the zoning district, huh?
Yep. And then, and then obviously in that same paragraph, we got two references to the conditional land use. So if we can do, get that language kind of take taken care of.
This thing is.
You really want to get out of it?
This thing is touchy.
Going as fast as I can.
It'll shut off.
Uh, any other, uh, comments on that, Kyle? Are you, you squared away with what we need there? Again, just a, just a technicality there as far as that goes. Uh, the next thing I had was on page ninety-one, but we've already discussed that, changing the height from three twenty-eight to six hundred feet. Uh, and the last thing that I have is page one oh nine. Uh, down at the bottom, C three size, no accessory structure combined square footage shall exceed the floor area of the principal structure on the lot. We had agreed amongst ourselves that we were just going to limit that to the lot coverage itself. So that, that's one of the changes that didn't. Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, it's, uh, page one oh nine, C, uh, number three, it's at the very bottom side. Um, we had requested the change to, uh, the wording to reflect lots, you know, the, the lot coverage that's in within each district, not to have a square footage limitation on that. Uh, and that's all that I have. Full disclosure, it was very late when I got to the back of this, so the words are starting to look all, all the same, so I'm hoping the team picked up the slack. Kyle, are you good on those, those, just those few changes, uh, on my part? Uh, really the biggest one was that last one, yeah, uh, that we wanted to reflect the lot.
Primarily clerical.
Okay. Uh, does anybody want to go first? Bonnie, are you ready? Do you have anything that I did not cover?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Um.
It would be helpful if you had a page number that you can give us.
Um. Okay, so the page or twenty-eight, and this is more of a grammatical thing.
Twenty-eight?
It's twenty-eight.
People are going to be supposed to shut off, though.
So it's at the very top for, um, A?
Yep, A.
Where it says fifty hundred. Need to put the six hundred in parentheses and then if I remember correctly, we were going to add the words living space.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You said living?
Living space.
Okay.
All right, Cass, so we're on page. Okay.
So for those that weren't here, um, may I clarify on that, expand on that?
Please.
Um, the, the item in question was regarding torches. Um, so we clarified six hundred feet of living space, so you can add a porch and the porch would not be included in the square footage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
No, there's others, no, I'm not, you know, at the moment.
We can circle back if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Barb, did you have anything?
Um, yeah, just a little thing that I would like clarification on, just because I know that the citizens sometimes get a little confused and in case they have an old zoning book that they're going by. It, um, the first page, one point zero two, um, the repeal of ordinance. Um, it says all of the previous amendments shall be replaced by, well, this document, but it doesn't have a date for this document, which I'm thinking maybe we should put two thousand twenty-four there.
It says fourteen, two thousand fourteen.
Exactly, and it says two thousand fourteen, which, I mean, I realize that's where we're coming from, but I think we ought to maybe take that fourteen out and just use the.
So my understanding is that your current ordinance was adopted in twenty-four.
That is, that is correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So the repealer stating effective on the date of this ordinance, but we can then put in the date.
Yep.
Yes.
You know, the Charter Township of Bedford zoning ordinance. You know, the charter township of Bedford zoning ordinance enacted in the year twenty-fourteen, referencing your current one is now repealed. So we're, we're, we need to reference what's being repealed.
Okay.
So if you go, if you flip over two pages to page three on adoption, we, we hereby certify that the foregoing ordinance is a true copy of the ordinance enacted by the township board of trustees, and then it has the process that we went through, and that will have the supervisor's signature, the date that that was done, and then, um, the clerk's signature as well. So that is kind of a, it, it's two pages later, but that's, that's what, what you're looking for, so.
Oh, yeah.
If you would like, I mean, I don't, is there a problem with us just, you know, putting that, that date up there? Or is that semi-confusing because two pages later, you've got the actual?
I, Mary, I like having both of the timestamps, just for non-conforming enthusiasts, um, for zoning administrator to reference until someone has touched them.
Okay.
So if we leave in, if we say effective on the date of this ordinance, and then underline where you can fill it in or.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes. Barb, is that Dennis Factory?
Yes, that explains it better to me.
Okay. Stacy, are you good with that? Okay, uh, is there anything else Barb that you would?
Yeah, but we are going to keep the two thousand fourteen.
Yes.
Reference, yeah, I like, okay, I like that.
That ha, that has to be in there.
Sure, sure. Gotcha, no, that's, it's for my questions.
Okay, uh, Shirley, did you have anything that you noticed that was of particular?
No.
No? Okay. Kevin, did you have anything?
They've pretty much covered it.
Alright. Claudia, are you ready to circle back?
Yeah.
Okay, Claudia, what was the item that?
Just go page seventeen.
Okay.
And then if we go up here to number five, shall not exceed a height of twenty, and then in parentheses, we have twelve feet.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify from Kyle's standpoint, that's supposed to be twelve. Now, it was twenty and we decreased it to twelve.
Okay.
We don't want to change the twelve to twenty.
Okay.
Right, that's what, 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 what we agreed on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so that's page seventeen.
Well, you're going to take out your twenty and we're going to leave it at twelve.
Change, change the word twenty.
The twenty's written inside of it.
Oh, sure, it's a, okay, it's written out, now in the number, okay.
I was the other one, okay.
Anything else Claudia, or is that?
I don't think so.
Right, the second, any of that? Okay, uh, trustee Greenwood, did you have anything that you'd notice? At all?
I think all of the recommendations I had before were changed.
Mm-hmm.
There was one question, I'm trying to figure out where to find it, I remember the discussion.
I have, I have your list, I can probably guess if you'd, if you'd like.
It was regarding, um, natural disasters and the reconstruction of smashed buildings.
Yes, so that's going to be section six in the non-conformities, I believe. Uh, I don't know what page that's going to be, uh, but we had.
Page one nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, what was your, you just wanted clarification?
Just wanted to review the language on it.
Okay.
Um, but I wasn't quite sure where I was.
Okay.
That is much further down.
So, it's going to be at the very bottom on one nineteen guys? It's rebuilding after a catastrophe, is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay, yep, so, uh, you are permitted, so in a catastrophe situation for a non-conformity, you're permitted to rebuild to the existing footprint of the building structure prior to the catastrophic event.
Okay.
Is what we changed that to. I believe there was, I believe we, we had a cap on it, yes, correct.
Perfect, I have nothing to add.
Okay.
So I had one more.
Okay, yep.
Uh, if we go back to page twenty-eight, and I don't know if this is actually one or not, but if you go down to B, location and setbacks, and you read number three, rear yard shall meet the minimum side yard setbacks.
Oh, we did, we discussed that before.
Is that, is that written? Is that the way it's supposed to be? Because when I read it, it kind of throws me off. That's why I'm asking if I'm bringing it up.
You said it's page twenty?
Eight. Okay.
Twenty-eight.
So it's going to be twenty-eight, B, three.
Number three, yep.
The rear yard shall meet the minimum side yard setback requirement requirements for a principal structure in the district in which the A D U is located. So how I read that is that your rear yard setback will be whatever the side yard setback is for a principal, principal structure in that district.
Okay, so then it is correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's double check it.
I, I, I'm reading that correctly.
Okay.
So that's how you establish what the rear yard setback is for the A D U itself.
Okay.
Any other clarification? And were you okay with the couple that we needed, the, the language change with the, the legal counsel on the decommission process on both the solar and the wind? And what entity it was? They did change that to where both, both are, both are listed more clearly, okay? Um, yeah, I don't have anything else guys, I mean, it's kind of weird. Last chance, uh, forever hold your peace, I guess, is what I'm saying, air crew.
All my cookies are gone.
Okay, Stacy, are you, are you good?
This is a phenomenal ordinance, thank you Kyle, thank you everyone, very good.
Thank you for all your hard work.
This is leaps and bounds above what we started with.
Thank you for your patience with us.
Well, I'd feel, I'd feel guilty if I didn't ask Seth one more question. So, I, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion for approval. Do I need to listen, list those ten changes that we just had specifically? Or can I just say with the changes recommended?
Recommend, if you recommend approval with the revisions that was discussed, he don't have to.
Okay.
I think Kyle cut all of them off.
Okay, wonderful.
And then Mr. Chair, just, just the point of reference, the, um, the kind of things that they like, um, when I would do minutes in that regard, discussing any revisions, I may just kind of list them to an extent, so anyone reading the minutes would understand. But your motion doesn't have to be that, so then, you know, parentheses, I would say, you know, grammatical clerical changes, maybe list a few of the highlighted ones, for example, in the minute.
Themselves, yes.
Just so it's clear of what those mean. Who could've?
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Nothing.
Does somebody else want to make the motion, or?
Small motion.
How second?
Yeah, there we go.
Well, you gotta have the complete motion now, you know, I'm just going to say. I'll do, I'll do it.
Okay. That's better.
Okay, uh, I will motion to recommend approval to the township board of the new draft zoning ordinance dated August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, with the minor revisions that were just discussed. Whatever you do. Kevin seconded. Any dis, any further discussion on this motion, or are we ready for the vote guys? Okay, roll call when you're ready Shirley.
Alright, Kevin Bellison.
Yes.
Mike Stab.
Yes.
Shirley Tuggle, yes. Barb Jones.
Yes.
Claudia Brown.
Absolutely.
Trustee Stacy Greenwood.
Yes.
We have six affirmative, uh, recommendation is approved.
Alright, thank you. And, uh, just to echo Stacy's comments, thank you to everybody. This, uh, was a long trek, buddy, uh, added something along the way, really appreciate it. Really appreciate guys' hard work, all three of you guys over there, I mean, Cody, Cody has never been happier to have us not have any packets that look like this. So, uh, really, good job everybody.
Absolutely.
Uh, next item on the agenda, I have my agenda in front of me, but it's got to be public comment, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, public comment, can be on anything you want. We'll open that at, uh, six forty-two.
Short sweep, thank you all for the hard work that you've done, on behalf of the public. It's not an easy job, what you're doing, pages and pages of information. And I just appreciate all the work that you put in, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'd like to echo what he's saying, I mean, I'm hearing page one nineteen, this, that, I don't know how many pages you did, but it sounds like a lot of work and you guys did a good job, I, I appreciate it. And one thing I did hear him say something about, you had to have a horse, you had to have five acres. Well, there was a lady on, or a guy, I don't know, I guess, I don't know if it was a man or woman, lived on Cayer Avenue, just right up from Michigan Avenue, actually had a horse, there was only two lots. Lived in the porch of their house. Guy on his feet, yeah. Yeah, two houses up from Mid Road, right side.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, now they have a bunch of firewood inside, lot there, but yes, they had a horse in there and then, of course, people seen it and they couldn't do it no more, but I just thought I'd throw that in there. It wasn't five acres.
Sure it wasn't a pony? Wasn't a low pony?
It was a horse, I mean, it's kind of big.
Any, any other comments? Alright, we'll close that at six forty-three. Alright, next item on the agenda is going to be our personal privilege time. Claudia, would you like to start us off?
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone for all their hard work, we've, um, I think we've done a really good job here. And I appreciate everybody.
Barb?
Yes, to our three geniuses over there at that table. I wish we could take you guys to dinner, but that would probably be illegal. I don't know.
As long as we don't have a quarrel.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we would have a, gosh, thank you again.
Uh, Shirley?
I echo what the team has already said, learned a lot.
Uh, Kevin?
I would also like to echo the fact that everybody has done a tremendous amount of work, especially our team over there, and, and Mike, we have also putting all this together. Well, we just want to thank everyone.
Uh, trustee Greenwood?
I just want to echo what everyone said, um, the board will be very impressed, I think, you guys did right by the citizens. Um, no pressure, but chairman's side, you led this, so, um, I'm requesting that you present it for the board.
Alright. Thank you.
Maybe we should all be there.
Yeah. Yeah, you know what, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Put me in front of the firing squad.
Have you back.
There you go, absolutely. Alright, thank you.
This is, this is impressive, thank you everyone.
Uh, so I would just like to add a couple of things. Uh, one, obviously, you know, uh, starting with the master plan, two years ago, seems like forever ago now, uh, th, this group kind of, uh, really has come together, uh, not knowing, and I would include myself in that, uh, what the process was going to be, what was expected of us. Uh, we couldn't have done it without McKenna's help, um, or the attorney's office, so that's, you know, those guys were very instrumental along the way, behind the scenes. Lots phone call, lots, lots of stuff, obviously, so, uh, a big thank you to them. Uh, and to you guys as well, for, for, you know, being organized and bringing what you did to the table.
Well worth the call.
I have, I have no doubt that this group is, uh, ready and capable of, you know, taking on, you know, zoning tax amendments, you know, and doing, and doing the things to keep up on, on the zoning ordinance that, you know, are required now because the world is just so different, um, you know, I mean, it's not something that we were in a, a habit of, I guess, per se beforehand, um, but I, 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 I think this group can definitely handle that, and, uh, I appreciate you guys letting me lead the team, so.
We appreciate you. Absolutely, they're killing it.
I, I would, I would venture to guess, we'll probably be, uh, back into this with the tax amendment sooner rather than later. There is some stuff in the legislation that can happen in lame duck with both marijuana and, you know, solar and, you know, short term rentals and stuff like that. Uh, but I think the, the biggest takeaway here is that I think we've all really, uh, realized that it's better to be proactive.
Yes.
Than reactive.
And not wait every ten years or something, right? My goodness.
So anyways, uh, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at six forty-seven.